I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I welcome everyone for any disclosure of community area interest or the general nature thereof. Seeing none, we need a motion to move into committee of the whole.
Motion read, moved by Council Row, seconded by Council Wyman, that Council proceed into close, sorry, committee of the whole at 5:00 or 3:00 P. M.
Would you call the vote?
Council Cook.
Not on that I see.
Council Crevitz.
Yes.
Council Fair.
Yes.
Yes.
Council Wyman.
Yes.
Council Row.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes. Thank you. And I'm going to call on Ramona now to walk us through there were some changes made and even some more today, so I'm going to let her explain, walk us through that part before we get into the rest.
Okay, I'm going to start by sharing my screen. Can you see the budget commentary?
Yes.
All right, perfect. So where we left off last week was at the part of the budget where we were going about to go through each service area. One of the things that we did last week is that we made some changes to the to the summary page. We we did some, we took out some amounts on the fly at the last budget meeting. Since then, we've also taken a second look at some of the salaries and overall, we reduced on the admitting corporate services, corporate support side, 60,000 there. There were some items deleted from the commitment section that have been paid. That was determined mostly for fire amounts. The water and wastewater lines had been showing up on the reserve schedule, but that's a separate rate funded budget, and that will be brought forward later there after our water wastewater rate decisions tonight. Also, there were data labels added to the stacked bar chart. I remember that was a request from Dennis, so that has been done, and I added a second, a second chart so that it could be a clustered column chart shows you that same information in a different way so that you can see between service areas what is requiring the most funds and what what proportion they take up year over year. So we've also had a final number from Catfish Creek Conservation Authority, so we've budgeted for their actual requisition, and we've split the solid waste in the detail of the amounts. We split that into tax funded and a user funded area cost analysis. So you'll see that when we go down to each service area. So when we did that, we ended up after those changes with an overall tax levy increase of 4.7% over and above the list, the lift that we get from assessment. This morning, we met as a senior management team, and we made a few more changes. What we did was we added 75,000 to revenue from the reserves to cover the modernization expenses that we've budgeted for. We've deleted the 120,000 capital project from Hawks Cliff, and we deleted a Rhodes co-op position for 28,000. When we made those changes, I'll just move this over to what you're looking at. Once I did a refresh on those changes, we ended up with a 3.3% tax levy increase. That's not in the documents that you have in front of you in terms of the net effect of those adjustments, but we, I think the best plan going forward is that we haven't looked at each service area by service area for questions and review. So I would suggest that we continue on in that manner, looking at each service area, and keep in mind the three things, the three adjustments that we made this morning will make a difference in your overall tax levy percent. Does that make sense to move forward on that basis, or would Council like to go directly to the capital items and see what else they can cut?
Just, Wyman, I'm just going to, my screen keeps going on and off constantly, so I can't watch it. Just give it a minute and it'll blink again. At least it has been, it's been going on and off. Don uses, no, he sees that one and the other one. Now it's suddenly on, but it has been just, I look at it and it goes black, and I look at it and it goes black, so, sorry. Yours just did that.
It's black.
Okay.
It's back now, but it just.
That's what ours, mine's been doing that constantly, so.
Turn it down now.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sorry, Ramona, about that, it just, I was having a hard time seeing the screen because it kept going out on us. So yes, Council, are you okay with Ramona suggesting going through the service areas now? Is that everybody okay with that? Tom?
I'm pleased that we're reducing the increase, but I hope we're still looking for other areas because I still like it galore, as I imagine the majority of us.
Yes.
I'm happy with that, we're going in the right direction.
Okay, go, looks like everyone's okay with you going through the service areas now.
All right, so I will head to that on the document that we've been looking at, and if there, if there are going to be cuts, I will make them on my document on the fly as we, as we review each service area and Council suggests other items. So this is the operating expense trends by F I R. service area, just what proportion each service area takes as a total amount of our operating expenses. And then the new chart is just showing, it's drawing from the same data, but showing that in a column chart, clustered column chart. So we will go down to each of the individual service areas. So administrative and support services, I think we had talked about some of these revenues, and we had talked about this piece in our last meeting. And there's not really a lot of differences there. We're budgeting a little bit higher on the revenue side, and of course, in our property taxes for what we've got budgeted right now, small transfer to reserves for council equipment, which we've talked about, our rents and financial state, financial expenses that we hope to be a little more in line with what they were in 2018, materials and supplies, again, in line with 2018, 2019. Contracted services are up for some of the studies that we're looking at, and also for the, for the modernization that we had talked about, and salaries, wages, and benefits are in line with the increases that are received, CPI increases year over year. So are there questions on administrative support services or anything you want to look at in more detail there?
Any questions? Seeing none, go ahead.
One question.
Sorry, Council Crevitz wants to ask a question now.
Item the fines and penalties, why the large decrease there?
For revenue?
Yeah, yes.
So we forgave our interest revenue for actually in 2020, so fines and penalties, just a minute. Bring over the data sheet, and we will take a look. And we'll take a look at fines and penalties. And we'll just see specifically what's going into those particular numbers. So that's our interest and penalties that we're budgeting for from our property taxes. So our 2019 actual was 333,000. You can see that, I don't know if you can see that. Budgeting for 240,000, so we are budgeting conservatively there. We're budgeting as conservatively as what we have budgeted for in previous years. We are seeing a fairly large decrease there in bank interest. That's partially because interest rates are down and also because we are working with a smaller, slightly smaller pot of funds. And then we have not budgeted for any reserve fund interest, which was budgeted in previous years. So there is something there that we, you know, we're trying to budget conservatively in that piece. We don't need to budget as conservatively if Council chooses not to.
Question I would ask, Ramona, would be, we've looked at, I know we still have certain properties that are many years behind in their taxes, and that we're looking at pack sales. Where do those get brought in if there's a potential for some of those? Are they in the budget anywhere or not?
No, they are not in the budget anywhere. What happens with that is those property tax arrears are showing as receivables on our ledger, and so any property tax sales goes to address the amount that's sitting in receivables. There will be some extra expenses to do with the property tax sales. Those are usually added to the cost of each property as each stage happens. The cost of delivering that particular next stage of the property tax sale process is added as a receivable to those properties. And what you will find next year, once we're, once we finally finish the process, which actually takes longer than a year, that your interest revenues will be going down because we'll have a lot fewer properties that we're charging interest on.
Thank you. In line with Dennis's question on the the fines and penalties, then it's gone down every year from 2018, 19, 20 to now, like, why, what, why was 2018 so much higher? I know you weren't the treasurer then, but you have any idea why it was so much higher then?
You know, I do not know that in 2019, a couple of months worth of interest.
Just went black again. We can barely hear you right now, Ramona, the air conditioning or whatever just came on, and it's very hard to hear in here.
Okay, sorry, I just have, there's a lot of feedback. So in 2018, the total received or our total charge was 351,000. In 2019, actual, it was 333,000, so there was some forgiven there. But also what we found in 2019 with the change of the staff in the finance department, there were a couple of months where penalty and interest was not charged in 2019. So interest and penalty has been charged all of the months year to date in 2020, except for the ones where we forgave those months because of COVID. We didn't charge penalty and interest for the full time. So by the time we end up, end of year, I think we're going to be not very much bigger in this number. This is 275, so we may hit the 320, 330 by the end of the year. And we are budgeting conservatively for 240. So that's something if you choose to budget less conservatively, you can, that would make up a little bit of the shortfall there in terms of tax rate.
Any, yes, Council Fair.
I'm just, I'm sort of lost on this one. The line that Council Crevitz asked about is the fines and penalties, the 370,000, correct?
Yeah.
I'm just, I, even if you go from 2019, it was six, almost 660,000. And so far up to October, we're 400,000 in the, in the poor COVID year. And so I anticipate we're going to have some more coming in yet between November and December. And then we're still dropping down more than that for 2021, when we should be on actual. And as far as staff not being available in the one year where you're saying that weren't collected, it really shouldn't matter if staff is there or not. The penalties should be standalone set up properly anyway. So I'm just trying to get a grip on why it's going down like that, really.
Yeah, that's what I was asking about basically, Bill, too. And, and, sorry, Ramona, the, the numbers you were quoting, are they just part of that fines and penalties? Because you were quoting totally different numbers from what we have on the sheet in front of us.
Okay.
As Bill said, it's 370 for this year, and you were quoting quite a bit lower than that.
Are you seeing the 370 here? The 370 is the subtotal.
Yep.
Which is budgeted, and then the 2021 budget for 370 is showing up right here in fines and penalties. And then when we look at 2019, actual, 659, 797, and you can see these numbers are making up that 659, 797, which is highlighted in yellow.
Elaine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I would just suggest maybe that is, you know, the right thing to do is be conservative on the revenues, but in this case, it does look like if you even go back to 2014, it really has never been less than $400,000. So it's maybe a small adjustment, but it may be a little overly conservative at this point.
Yeah, it's never even been less than 478,000, not just 400.
If 2014 and 15 were.
Oh, I'm sorry. Not on my sheet.
I think a big part of that is that interest rates, like, we've got quite a bit budgeted less for bank interest because our rates are lower than what they've ever been. We also have lower balances that we're getting interest from, so that has been budgeted lower. And what we could do then, we can put some budget in the, we can increase the bank interest, put some budget in the reserve fund interest, and we can bring these other budget numbers closer to what we had in 2018, if that would make you more comfortable. I'm not sure that the bank interest number is really going to come in any higher. So would you like me to do that? Would you like me to make this 120 and 90 and, you know, increase those numbers?
How would it affect the, the actual chart that we have besides, I know you're in there. How would, if we increase those to the 2018 level?
Increase them to the 2018 level?
That's what you were saying.
That, not 19.
19 or 18?
18.
18. Breathe it. And we're not saying everything, just assume fines and penalties.
Question.
Look, it's, go ahead.
Is there an issue with Ramona's speaker? It seems to be cutting out a lot.
Yeah, it does. Ramona, we, we hear you occasionally, and then at other times, we can barely hear you at all, and sometimes you're loud, so I don't know if there's something wrong with your speaker or what.
I'm sorry, yeah, I definitely have the same place.
Yeah, we're not hearing you at all right now. You're just a, sort of a mumble in the background.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not quite sure what to do with that.
Probably her laptop and the screen.
Can I talk louder? Does that help? Can you hear?
Yes, that's much better. I'm still blacking out constantly.
Okay, so I'll speak louder. So if I raise that amount to 470 from what we had it, the 370.
Yes.
Is Council more comfortable with that?
Council Fair.
Of course, I'd feel more comfortable that, but I'd feel more comfortable, I'm just wondering how we can, like, I know we're asking questions, that's quite a fluctuation. We, we need to justify why we're doing it. We can't just say, well, yeah, I guess we'll increase that up 100,000 and, and this one down. Have to have a reason why we're doing it. And I'm, I'm just wondering if it, is it easy to change it up to 300,000 because you're being too conservative with revenues? You know, I wanted to, to be realistic, but, you know, I, I want to squeeze everything as much as I can so our taxpayers get the best deal, but it just seems, you know, how can we, I don't, don't want to say cavalier, but how can we just up and down just like that here and there? There has to be some reason for doing it. And I'm wondering, do you feel comfortable with the reasoning to go from 370 to 470?
If we want to budget a little more accurately, yes. If we want to leave some sort of, some sort of flexibility in there for when costs come in higher, that's generally the reason why we tend to budget a little more conservatively in these areas. We don't have to budget more conservatively. If we don't, and we have cost overruns in other areas, there's no cushion to, to kind of account for that. Does it help you on your tax rate? Yes. Are we, do we know that our interest rates on our bank accounts are about a third of what we were getting last year? Yes. So to bring that down to 50 or 70 from, from what we had before, you know, I, I think that's reasonable, given that our cash balances are even lower than what they were before, and the bank interest rate is down by a third, then, you know, we're, we're getting pretty close to the line there, maybe on the interest, the tax, tax arrears interest, that is really going to fluctuate a lot this year because we are going to property tax sales. So the property tax sales are going to affect that in a way that we're not quite sure about until we start seeing payments come in. So if some people pay off the properties that go for tax sale early in the year, then you are going to find that these actual revenues will go down because you no longer have outstanding balances to collect penalty and interest against. So it's my feeling that, you know, if that happens fairly quickly, earlier in the property tax sale process, which has, you know, is starting, it's just at its beginning stages, and the launch meeting is tomorrow, then you're going to find these numbers are going to be a lot less. Can I predict exactly how much? No.
Council Fair.
My last comment on that is, I, I lean, I always, as an accountant, I lean towards realistic, and, and I, I don't lean as much to conservative, charging the people more taxes. So I'd, I'd lean more towards the realistic arguments, even if it takes us in close, I, I would rather support it much more than that, that way than, than just a, an estimate. So, so yes, I do lean towards realistic.
Okay, so with the changes that have been made, do you feel that, do you feel that what's there is more realistic?
No, I feel, I feel that that's too conservatively low on the penalties based on prior years, and the fact that in 2020, we're already 30,000 higher than that, and we've only gone roughly to October. So I'm thinking it definitely shouldn't, should not be lower than, than the 2020 actuals for sure, and probably would, would approach a higher number than that, because 2020 has been a terrible, terrible year. So, so I, I, I don't have a problem with, with going up, you know, the 50, 60, 70,000 on the, on the revenue side. I just, I just always like to make sure that it's justified and that it's not just sort of plucking a number.
No, our, our bank interest rates are a third of what they were a year ago, so I don't think that budgeting 186,000 or whatever amount is for that particular, this particular line item is appropriate. I would recommend going to about a third of that. So, because our interest rates are a third, so I've made this 50, and I've made this 20, which is about a third of each. I could make this 60 to be exactly a third, but we don't know what's going to happen with interest rates in 2020.
Both blinking now.
470.
So I'm at 470 right now instead of what we had as 370.
And, and based on what you've just said, the justification, I do feel comfortable with that number.
Okay.
Is everyone else okay with that as 470? Okay, thank you, that's 100,000, hello?
Yeah, that, every little bit helps. So I just want to make sure everyone on Council then was comfortable with these changes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So actually, what I can do before I move the sheet is just run back to where that has brought us. So that gets us to 2.6.
Thank you. Now we'll go on to the next service area, I assume.
Yes, so we'll go on to the arena. And the numbers in brackets are credits or revenues. Sorry, I didn't change the font for that particular one, I missed that. Are there any questions on the arena revenues and expenses? Again, we've budgeted, because of COVID, we've budgeted reduced revenues. And we've got increased expenses with the salaries, wages, and benefits. That's in line with 680, and there's some extra time required in the arenas because of COVID.
Materials and supplies, I'm assuming is from COVID, that that's why there's such a, quite a large increase in materials and supplies.
So, but let's take a look at that. Clear that. We take a look at arenas, and we take a look at materials and supplies. And let's see what we've got. So insurance is 40,000 of that, 30,000 of that is insurance. Make sure I'm at the top of the sheet. And then, just keep going till we see other differences. There's some small differences there in the water. We've also got budgeted for accessibility man lift upgrades and for furnace one in the electrical room. And then we also have main lobby large furnace, dressing room furnaces, and so I guess four furnaces, their total, and LED lights that we're budgeting for. So that's the arena capital, and other capital would be showing in there as well, yes, and Port Stanley Arena Capital. Can you hear me okay still?
Yes, we can hear you at the moment.
Okay, I stopped yelling.
Any other questions, Bill? Council Fair?
So then I, I take it that the increase in contracted services due to these other things being installed, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Matthew had your hand up as well.
Yeah, I was just going to correct Ramona on one thing. When she went to the large tools and equipment and mentioned the man lift, we're looking at, we're currently looking at applying for a grant, some grant funding for a, a new lift or elevator at the Belmont Arena. So rather than the man lift. So rather than the man lift, we're going to use that money that's there to replace the fire suppression system over the ice surface. But there wouldn't be no change to that 66,000 that you see that Ramona's got highlighted right there.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Any other questions on this part? If not, go ahead and move on to the next.
So then we'll get to the asset management piece. You know that this is a new service area and in this particular service area, we've budgeted 317,000 for salaries. And the salaries in the year-to-date will be by the end of the year, we'll have them pointed toward this particular budget service area. Now that's for asset management and I don't know if Lloyd has anything to add to the asset management.
Yeah, nothing further to add. The asset management costs are all wages and salaries and wages.
Thank you. Just for the public, they may wish to know how many people are employed in the asset management vision.
Through you, Madam Chair, there's myself, that half of my time is recovered for asset management, the other half of my time is spent for development services. We have one senior technologist that their time is spent equally be 50% in asset management, 50% in, sorry, development services. Then the asset management GIS technician is previously in the physical services department. They're now allotted for their time in asset management as well as the asset management analyst to assist with valuing of the assets as well as the reporting back for the province.
Thank you. So two halves and two holes.
Yep.
Thank you, just in case anyone was curious. Okay, on to beach maintenance.
Any questions on the beach maintenance budget or anything that you'd like to highlight or review?
The fines and penalties, basically the parking charges there or? It's for beaches, all. Sorry.
This will tell us exactly and it'll tell us fairly quickly. So those are the POA fines that we, that we levy through our bylaw enforcement and the actual amount that we receive has been going down every year. We don't know what the number is for 2020 year-to-date yet. And so we've budgeted 25,000 in line with previous years. And since the new, new building was built by the county, we are receiving a smaller proportion of those licenses and fees. They're paying for the provincial fences building and then we'll get our share of what's left over.
I'm just curious that the POA fines are in beach maintenance?
Parking revenues are used to cover beach maintenance.
Okay, so it is parking, yes.
Yeah, it falls under the same service area.
Right, thank you. Any questions on beach maintenance? No beach rescue then?
So beach rescue, I understand has been a fairly busy area over the last couple of years and calls are not reducing. So this is a portion of the fire and rescue services budget. And I think everything seems to be fairly in line and even a little budgeting a little bit less than what we actually spent in 18 and 19. Are there any?
Any questions? Counselor Krebitz?
The year-to-date for that 346,000, what's the increase caused by in that? In the 2020 year-to-date?
Probably the firemen being on the beach. That would be my guess.
I believe that.
And we had extra bylaw officer as well, yeah, or two.
That's probably what it is or?
I don't know. I assume.
I've got it here for beach patrol. We had the extra ambassadors.
Okay, thank you.
And we had an extra bylaw officer as well, yeah.
We did.
Okay, building permit and inspection.
So you will see that this budget comes to zero because anything that we have left over or extra funding in our particular building permit and inspection budget needs to, by legislation of the Building Code Act, needs to be reserved in the building code, in the building reserve. So you'll see a reserve transfer there that we will be pulling out 28,000 out of that reserve to fund our building permit and inspection program as the budget currently stands.
Any questions on that one? Seeing none, on to bylaws.
Any questions on this area?
Any questions? Counselor Fair.
I'm just curious, rents and financial expenses, I just wonder what, what rents are in bylaws?
Bank charges for parking. So those will be the bank charges that are attached to our McKay meter system. Then they'll also be the bank charges that are attached to our HONK system.
Okay. Any other questions on bylaw? If not, cemetery maintenance? I'm sorry, Colleen, you had a question?
Yeah, sorry, just about the bylaw, the contracted services, I guess. I was just curious whether the expectation for 2021 is to actually have the same number of bylaw officers this year as last year or next year as this year.
That's a good question because we did have extra this year with COVID and it will, I think it'll be very dependent on COVID. But we, we had another firm, I think part of the reason it went down from 2019, there was another firm that was hired to assist with bylaw and they're no longer, we're no longer using them. So that might account for why it's gone down. But is this, Ramona, going to have, we're assuming the same number of bylaw officers as we did last summer in contracted services?
So with respect to building and bylaw, those are areas that are taken care of by Lloyd's department. So I will turn that over to Lloyd, the Director of Asset Management and Development Services, to answer questions related to that budget.
Through you, Madam Chair. So we are, we did budget for the same number of bylaw officers as we did, that we had in 2020. With COVID, we're not sure how that's going to roll out, even if there is, sorry, if there, there is a vaccination or vaccine that comes out, it's going to take some time to roll that out. So there still may be issues with respect to COVID and enforcing provincial orders. At this point, it's a bit of an unknown. As far as, sorry, and as far as contracted services, we do not use any third-party services for a bylaw anymore.
So what is, what is the, there's 39,000 in contracted services, what would that be?
39,000 in contracted services is 6,000 toward legal services for bylaw. It is shelter expenses for approximately 10,000. Contracted vet services, sorry, contracted services and shelter expenses, that's a total of 25,000 there. 3,500 for vet services, which I believe we're paying to dispose of animals on behalf of citizens who don't have that ability, I believe it's referenced. And then we have JJ McKay meter service calls and, and fees. So those are our meter service calls and fees.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions under bylaw? Seeing none, we are now moving to cemetery maintenance. Questions? Is this the contracted services? I know we give each, we give certain cemeteries some annual funds to assist them, to keep them so that the municipality doesn't have to take them over. Would they be under contracted services or salaries? I assume they'd be under contracted.
So yes, those would be under contracted services as well as lawn care at the cemeteries that we pay for.
Thank you. Counselor Fair.
Just, just one point. On salaries and wages, I noticed it says 5,000. There's nothing been paid out in 2020. Are they just paid annually?
So it's my understanding that they're paid annually. And in terms of salaries, not, we must be budgeting for some time for our own personnel to do some cemetery maintenance. And we did actually have time actually spent in 2019. I'm not sure if it's Jeff or Lloyd who can speak to exactly what we do at the cemeteries there.
Don has his hand up, so I'll let Don speak to it.
Madam Mayor, sometimes there is a need for, for staff to do some repairs to fencing or various things around the cemeteries that, so that would, salaries would cover any of those expenses. Sometimes they're not anticipated, it may be due to vandalism, but typically there is some minor work that has to be done from here.
Conservation, you said, is now based on actual amounts?
For Catfish Creek, yes. For the other one, I believe that was a budget we had done, why? It can be fairly much the same as the previous year. Catfish Creek has actuals in there now.
Thank you. County roads.
So county roads again as a budget that we bring to zero using the county roads reserve and the revenue that we get from the county on an annual basis. So you can see for this year, we are budgeting to put 35,700 back to that county roads reserve. That's what we're budgeting for, not, not what actuals are going to turn out to be exactly because it's always a predictive exercise. So that we are budgeting for that amount to go back into the reserve and top it up.
And I know that is something the county are looking at is the, the way they're paying out and servicing the roads, that that's one of the areas for the service delivery review that they're meeting with all the municipalities and going over that to make sure that it's fairly done.
Any questions on the?
Emergency management and planning. Any questions? Counselor Fair.
I'm just curious, I see the year-to-date is 196,000 in salaries and benefits and then basically nothing for 2021. I'm just wondering, what did we spend so much extra on emergency management in 2020? Pardon me?
So in 2020, when COVID first rolled out, we created emergency management set of accounts in the ledger and with the expectation of possible funding, which there was funding that was sent to us 344,000 to cover those costs, all the staff who were working on emergency management projects and items, whether they were involved with extra cleaning or in meetings to determine what should happen with our emergency control group meetings and things like that, those salaries were pointed toward the emergency management and planning group from efforts that would have otherwise sat in other departments in 2020.
Yeah, you can see that, Bill, if you look down to fire protection and rescue, the salaries, wages and benefits were quite low to date in, in 2020 and that's because they were, Chief McDonough is our chief, our emergency measures coordinator. So his salary is probably a lot of it's coming out of the emergency measures, management, planning, et cetera, rather than out of fire at the moment. So those probably balance between each other. Plus, I know Anushka would have had some in there probably too. Any other questions on emergency management and planning? If not, facilities? Any questions on facilities?
Any questions on fire protection and rescue? Hearing no questions on facilities?
Fire protection, rescue, any questions? Yes, Counsel Row.
Materials and supplies for the fire protection and rescue. A little more than double. I was, yeah. Or less than 2019, but, or higher than 2018. Not quite sure what happened in 2019, but.
So materials and supplies for fire protection and rescue, I'll just go to the bottom of that. Can you hear me at all?
Yes.
Still coming through, okay? All right. So we've got a certain amount for funding for our vehicle replacement program and we also have equipment that, that's a lot higher in there for that amount. We had half a million budgeted last year for different types of equipment and our actual in 2019, of course, we had the big, the big ladder truck CE1 and another truck that we purchased in 2019. So there's still a little bit there in the capital. It is way down from 2019 actuals. That I think is the biggest change in this particular budget. Everything else is, is fairly small.
Counselor Krebitz?
So the vehicle replacement schedule is being lumped into the materials and supplies? Is that's what's happening? Why isn't that a separate item?
Reserve. Isn't it supposed to be reserve?
It just, it looks like that's what's happening there. It's materials and supplies actually includes the vehicles.
Right. Well, when I put together this particular, this particular chart that you're looking at, it's including capital and operating altogether. And then when we go to a different chart, you'll see the capital piece all by itself.
We put, each year, we put a certain amount of money in to fire vehicle reserve so that we have the money when we need new fire vehicles, that it's there. And I know. And I know we had a, you know, a study to show exactly how much we needed to put in each year to make sure that we would, you know, be in the black with the reserve and purchasing vehicles. So is that included in, like, you've got reserve transfers, that's different? That's, is that the one to the vehicles?
So the reserve transfers is the amount of money that we have put back into the reserve or taken out of the reserve. So in 2016, we put in six hundred and twenty-six. In 2017, we put in four hundred and thirty-seven. In 2018, we put in four hundred and twenty-four thousand. In 2019, we pulled out one point four million to fund the purchase of the vehicles that we purchased in that year. And then we are budgeting to put back in four hundred and five thousand this year into that. Materials and supplies, like this, this whole chart includes operating and capital together by service area. I could show them separately. To do that, I would, I would just add a second chart for each one, if that was preferable. They are showed separately in aggregate at the top. So if we go back to our capital expenses and our operating expenses by service area, you can actually see the operating expenses in the summary chart farther to the top. So you can see that our budget, there is two million for fire protection and rescue. It was actually two point one five million in 2019. And 2018, the actual operating expenses were around two million. So to compare operating expenses in total there, that's where you're going to see that part of it.
One thing I would ask, Ramona, you talked about the amount going into reserves and then the large amount that came out in 2019. Why was nothing put in in 2020? Showing zero there or nothing?
In 2020, year-to-date, not all those entries have been made.
Okay, so you haven't put it, that money into reserves yet? But there will be some going in.
Yes, those are, those are quite often done as part of the year-end process. And as we get caught up in the finance department, we hope to be able to do them sooner in the year than what they are now.
Thank you. Colleen, go ahead.
Comment on the materials and supplies? So if I do look at the detail there, you can see where it's the, the two hundred and twenty-seven thousand of that increase from 2018 is because of the, the vehicles. And then there, the only other item that was large was fire IT supplies. It went from basically two thousand to twenty-five thousand. So not a large amount, but just curious if that has to be separate from, or is separate from the modernization work? Row two ninety-six.
So I'm not sure, Chris, was there a specific thing you were looking for in IT supplies there? I will let Chris speak to his budget.
Go ahead, Chief McDonough.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure. With IT, there's been services just to help us out with the software through, through our programs for updates. But other than that, we did not purchase any, anything other than, sorry, we bought e-solutions, which was thirteen thousand. So we did that about a month and a half ago. So that could be in there for the increase. So we're trying to do some virtual training because of COVID. We can't all be in the, the same room together. So we're trying to do something, and we're seeing possibly things are going to become locked down again, so that, that's where we're trying to do things online there. I will speak to the, the fleet reserve. So we did, we have got the fleet reserve stretched out to thirty-five years as council asked for. We talked about it, and on average, we're doing, putting back into that reserve four hundred and sixty-nine dollars at a two percent increase per year. So just to offset that cost. So the, the vehicle that we're purchasing is to replace a seven-year-old truck, and then the equipment that I'm doing, buying is auto extrication equipment, but that's separate from the fleet reserve.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions? Fiona?
Oh, no, sorry, I was fixing my glasses.
Okay, sorry. Okay, on to governance, I guess.
So in the governance section, you can see that you thought your move to salaries to even things out for council salaries and wages and benefits. And then we do have a transfer into reserves to cover off election expenses each and every year, and not too much different in your materials and supplies and other contracted services.
Any questions? If not, at the harbor?
The harbor is another fund that draws to zero based on our harbor reserve amount. So what we're showing for the salary and wages and contracted services for the expenses that we have in operating the harbor for the year, we have shown that those funds pulled from that reserve.
One thing I would ask is the, the other revenue, you know, has gone down every, well, practically every year since 2017, it's gone down. It's going up, well, year-to-date, there isn't much, but I'm just curious what that other revenue is that would vary that much?
So if I pull over the other revenue for the harbor funds and why it's varying, we'll see most of that in the investment income line. So our actual year-to-date is down. Again, we've budgeted conservatively in the investment revenue because we really don't know what it's going to be and what interest rates are going to do in 2021. So that would be the largest piece of, of that item year-over-year. You'll see that it did go down quite a bit for 2018, 2019, until we get the final statements. Probably will not be as high as a hundred and forty thousand. And the rest sundry income, we had some sundry income. I'm not sure what happened in 2017 for that. And then gain-loss on investment. So some years we have a gain and some years we have a loss on those investments.
Councilor Fair.
One thing, I noticed in nineteen, there were quite a, quite a few bigger numbers. I believe was, I know it was in nineteen, we were going to spend about five hundred thousand for wave mitigation, which was held off. I'm wondering if, if that, if that potential wave mitigation, since it wasn't done, is that going to move forward? Because it doesn't seem to be moving into here, because we'll probably end up doing it after the harbor water level study is done. So, so I was, I was wondering if, if that's carrying forward or if, or if it was, was put back and forth into reserves? And the next part of that question, I noticed there's a grant, a federal conditional grant in 2019. I just wonder what that was for and can we anticipate any other grants? Because I thought we just had a harbor divestiture fund, and I didn't realize that there were funds that we could still get coming into there.
So in terms of the funds that came in in 2017, I can't speak to that without looking it up.
I was only wondering, 2019?
Twenty nineteen? What line are you on, Bill?
Okay, the one under contracted services, I wondered if that included that proposed five hundred thousand that we're going to spend, but then we decided not to because we're going to water level study. And the other, other line I was looking at was the grants, federal, federal conditional grants for four hundred and twenty-three thousand. I wondered what that was and if we can anticipate anything like that coming in 2021.
So the federal conditional grants are where, as we pull funny, money out of those harbor reserve funds, I believe that's where that flows. That's where that gets applied. And then we did, check that though on my system. We did budget on the, on the commitments for that wave mitigation. And that is in the committed funds tab. You'll see the harbor breakwater and then another amount that was budgeted for, for the dock building before. And those amounts, we're saying we're still going to be doing those projects, so those amounts are committed funds that will be required for carry forward. We're not sure if we'll be using them in 2021, so we did not schedule them to come out of the reserve in 2021. So that answers that particular piece of the question?
Yes.
Okay. And then what I will do is pull this off to the side, and I'll look up your answer about the, the other amount. As we go through the rest of it, so. So the amount you're concerned about was the grant amount? And what was the other amount?
The federal conditional grant in 2019 was four hundred and twenty-three thousand. I'm just wondering what that was and if, if we've got potential to qualify for a grant similar to that in 2021.
I don't believe we had a separate grant in 2019, but I will double-check that.
Don?
There's no federal grant. There's been no federal grants since 2010. So we're actually not eligible, according to the divestiture agreement, for any federal grants on the ground.
So that should just be properly reserved then, I guess.
I think, I think that's an accounting, accounting line, but there, but there have been no federal grants.
Yeah, I was, I was hoping.
They gave us a lot in 2010, so. We certainly got our fair share at that point.
Then there's no reason to pursue that second one.
Okay. Any other questions on harbor? If not, we're moving on to municipal drains? Any questions on municipal drains? Certainly user fees and charges vary greatly. Councilor Krebitz.
So with that twenty-one budget, are we anticipating doing no municipal drain work? Is that the indication? I, I'm just curious. I don't know if there's an answer to that. Because I know of a few drains that are in the process right now, but nothing's being budgeted for 2021.
So municipal drains are funded by the beneficiaries of the drain, the drainage work. So normally, when drains are maintained, it's charged to the upstream owners. So it does not come onto the tax rate. We do have some salaries and wages that are paid to our drain superintendent that are not covered by either user charges toward the beneficiaries of the drain or that are not covered by OMAF or grants. So that's that fifteen thousand.
That's fine.
Okay. Any other questions on drains? If not, we'll move on. Parks? Is there any questions on parks? Councilor Rowe.
Thank you. Just curious, what, what are contracted services in parks? What are some examples?
Lawn mowing? Lawn mowing, probably. We have a contracted position that mows all the lawns.
Nothing else?
I don't know.
I'm finding out for you.
Yeah, there had to have been something. Well, of course, we didn't contract out putting the fencing stuff around the equipment, did we? Didn't our guys do that themselves?
Yeah, no, we did that.
Yeah. That was large. Pardon me?
They should have probably did a skate park, it's done this year, but did contracted service.
Mr. Leach thinks it's probably the skate park, which would have been a contracted service to build the skate park.
It's perfect sense. On the park.
Right, yes. Build the soccer fields.
Soccer fields.
Yep. Those are probably the contracted services this year, which why it would be so high.
Trail and Belmont. Connected services for the operations piece of that are things like our plowing the snow at the visitor's center, Jimmy John's tree services. The Belmont Park. Some rental adjustments there that have been showing through. It also includes things like signs, lawn cutting, monthly, monthly rental expenses, backflow devices, pest control, grass cutting. So those are the kinds of things that are being included in this particular line.
The one that I, I'm curious about, Ramona, is the revenue from other municipalities. Looks like we had it in seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. It doesn't look like we've had any in 2020, which is understandable with COVID. And we're not predicting any in 2021? I don't know what, what revenue do we, why do we get revenue from other municipalities under parks?
That's the county roads lift bridge. So during the year that the county roads lift bridge is closed, we won't be receiving revenue for that, I believe. Is that a rental amount?
Okay, so that's strictly money the county gives us because of the lift bridge?
That's my understanding.
Because it will be hopefully open five months into the year? Yes, Councilor Fair.
I'm, I'm just wondering, in the past, we've always taken, had some parks reserve. Is that reserve not available or used up? Because I see we didn't take any reserve in 2020, and it looks if we're not going to be taking any in 2021, according to this.
Sorry, I was just looking up that lift bridge, and it is income from the county for that lift bridge. So can you repeat that, Bill?
I'm just wondering, in the past, we've always been able to draw some parks reserves. I'm wondering, are the reserves used up? Because it doesn't show any reserve in 2020 or 2021 that we're drawing in to reduce our expenses down.
We've got our cash and low parkland equity for the parks reserve. So it's overdrawn. It's actually in a debit balance. We do have some restricted reserves for Glover Park. We, and the rest are parking. Though in terms of parks reserves, it's an overdrawn reserve fund.
Councilor Fair.
Given that it's an overdrawn reserve, I'm just wondering how much is overdrawn and if we should be actually putting some back this year?
That's, that comes the 5% from development. That's where that, that's not reserve we put in, that's whenever a house is built, 5% like with subdivisions, they either have to give us land or money in lieu of parkland. And that's where that reserve, is that not correct, Mr. Leach? That's where that reserve comes from. So in some areas where we don't feel there's a need for a park, cause there's one right near, then we take the money, they give us money instead.
So how much are we in deficit on that pool then?
Thirty-three, nine-eighty, and that's on the reserve sheet.
Thirty-three, nine-eighty.
Thirty-three, no, four thousand. That's all right.
How much was it, Colleen, I'm sorry?
Thirty-four thousand.
Thirty-four thousand.
Okay.
We would normally collect, and it may not be booked yet, but normally collect revenue for each lot that's severed. So it's typically $2,000 for a lot that's severed. If it's a subdivision and we don't accept land or the full amount of land that we're eligible to 5%, then it could be a combination of cash and lieu and parkland. But you know, with every severance that's completed, there would be revenue that would come in around the city of St. Thomas, under agreement with St. Thomas, we do share that revenue with St. Thomas. And then that allows us to use recreation facilities in St. Thomas.
A little balance open.
There will be some revenue there. The other thing, council, whereas we're waiting to hear back on Eastwood Park and a grant there, we, I thought we would have here, maybe we still will, but there's a grant to do the improvements, grant application. Though we've sort of advanced to the second round of consideration, but no final announcements have been made.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions on parks? Being none, we'll go to planning and development. Questions? Why were salaries, wages and benefits up so much in 2020? And down in 2019?
Yeah, that's where the asset management salaries were pointed to in 2019, 2020.
Okay.
Those will be repointed to the asset management section later. I don't know, Lloyd, if you had anything to add?
Through you, Madam Chair. Actually, in 2020, we, with the amount of development that we had, we actually increased our amount of onsite inspection on the new development than what we had done previously. Reason for that is the municipality will be assuming these fixed assets after the development is done. So we want to make sure that those assets are constructed appropriately and meet our standards so that there's no long-term financial implications to the municipality as a result of potentially substandard workmanship or issues during construction.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, policing.
My favorite one?
Yeah.
So our policing budget has been updated for the requisition from the OPP for the year 2021. They provide that normally sometime in early fall. So the 2195, nine-eighty-five is what they have quoted us for 2021.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Is there any appetite in putting something in this budget to look at the possibility of different scenarios of policing, as has been mentioned before?
Counselors, Will, Colleen says no.
Hey, thank you.
It was just the one, nobody else said anything. Council Fair.
We're going to see if we could explore some sort of a combined budget or another mixing mix.
Yeah, a mix. And that, the police services board will discuss that with the OPP. They're meeting, we were supposed to meet last Wednesday, but it's been postponed till January. Counselor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Marks.
This is a note. Our neighbors, Malahide and Elmer had lengthy discussions, and I guess they've been reported now that they've abandoned any attempt to work or take, Elmer to take on Malahide, they didn't, they thought, read correctly, I think they're more than satisfied with the service they were receiving. So that may be, maybe parallels that we'd end up with the same kind of result.
The only thing I will say is when that was discussed at the police services board, of course, and what effect that was going to have on Bayham if Malahide pulled out. And the police services told us that it would not affect any of us or our costs or anything, they've remained the same. That Bayham would get just as good a coverage, if not better, because they wouldn't need anyone in the Malahide area anymore. But they were very concerned, the biggest problem with having Elmer cover is they don't have enough staff and they don't have enough vehicles. So if there's a major incident in Elmer, there's nothing.
You're live, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Farren. Okay, so we're moving on then to, we were going to discuss, no, sorry, Council Grabbits.
Just one more follow-up on that. The, just for example, Ramona, the first line where it's 48,000, 48, and then it's 20 in the last column. What happened, where's the other 28,000? Is it required in 2022 or?
Yeah, so what we didn't have in our previous budgets was a good continuity of our reserve balances showing up in those budgets. You had some sheets that were separate Excel files. You had some sheets that were developed, but they were not showing really any kind of continuity for commitments. So this is our chance to add that continuity for commitments. So for IT equipment, for general government, did we already have 48,000 approved? Do we still intend to use that full 48,000 for IT equipment? Yes, we do. Do we think we're going to spend it all in 2021? No, we think we're going to spend 20,000 of that in 2021 for new IT equipment. Now that's based on conversations that I have with our IT group saying, what do we need to do to make sure we have fully functional backups? What do we need to do to make sure that our servers are running where they need to run? And so we put an estimate to that. So they didn't feel that, you know, during those conversations, we didn't feel that the full 48,000 would be used in the current year. We did not budget capital balances for that during the current year. We use a previous year commitment to be carried forward. We think we're going to use 20,000 in 2021.
Okay, and just one final.
Go ahead.
So when the full amount is not required or more is required, when more is required, it comes to council. When the money is saved, we don't know where it goes.
Anything?
I was gonna stop there, that's fine, let's continue on, please.
Yeah, it all ends up adjusting in your rate stabilization reserve. And that's where you see your reserve continuity. So where it goes at the end of the day is your rate stabilization reserve. Anything that's, that ends up being under, if it's not required for carry forward, then it doesn't hit your rate stabilization reserve when we close the books at the end of the year. Is there a continuous report to council on committed funds and how much is used? No, we don't have that type of reporting. We're not that sophisticated yet.
Thank you. Okay, roads. We have another meeting in 25 minutes. Questions on roads? The only one that I had was the equipment charges and we've suddenly got income instead of expenses. We've had expenses every other year and now suddenly it's looking like it's a positive thing. Could you explain that?
So the equipment charges is used as an expense line in various parts of the budget based on usage of pieces of equipment for the roads department. And so those equipment charges are used to fund the capital equipment replacement reserve. And then we pull money out of that capital equipment replacement reserve when we are purchasing equipment. So the net effect of those equipment charges in the 2021 budget are an income to, or a draw from the equipment charges. The equipment reserve for roads.
Any other questions on roads? Seeing none, solid waste.
So for solid waste, we have the total budget at the top. And then one of the things that we did over the past week is to split it out between tax-funded and user fee-funded amounts. You'll see that the user fee income is intended to bring the, that part of the, of the year to a zero balance in terms of income and expenses. So when we roll something into a user fee model, we want our fees to always cover our expenses. And the rest of the costs that we're intending to work in the run-up to the bin system are under the tax-funded budget.
Any questions? Council Fair.
Just curious on the other revenue, what makes up? Cause all of a sudden, the other revenue is almost 700,000. I may be losing it here somewhere, but before it's never been that high. And I'm just wondering even if it's split. Just looks pretty high.
The cart, the revenue for the carts?
Yeah. Cause we're taking it here instead of out of tax, it's out of user fee funded. You can see from the bottom one where that's coming from.
Okay, thank you.
Where most of that's coming from, yeah. Which would go back to the 70-something added from what was in in 2019. Okay, any other questions on solid waste, whether tax-funded or user fee-funded? If not, the final one is training and health and safety. I have one question here, and that was materials and supplies. It's the same as wages, and I just wondered if that was an error or not? Just because they're exactly the same and the actual in previous years was more than that, other than in 2020. So just wondered why it would be lower than the others? I mean, I'm happy if it's lower, but I just wondered why.
No, that's not an error, they actually do end up getting the same amount, just with a different combination there. So if you see for training, health and safety, you'll see the materials and supplies, there's my mouse, there's my mouse. So the materials and supplies are these lines which, and these lines. So prevention, education, cleaning services, health and safety supplies, small tools and equipment, some training and meeting expenses. So you'll have 61,000 in salaries and wages and you'll have another 61,000 in materials and supplies, just switching the six for that six.
Thank you. Any other questions? So at the moment, because we haven't taken anything else out, we're at 2.6%? Is that what you're saying, increase?
Yeah, so based on all the changes that we discussed with senior management this morning, plus the ones that we've made on the fly here tonight, we're at 2.6%. I'll just refresh that to make sure everything's good, and it appears to be. So a 2% levy increase over and above our assessment lift would lead to a tax rate increase of 2.73%. Unless council wishes to take, take another look at any other section, you can advise me where you'd like to go and make any more adjustments.
So from your note that you sent out to us, that you've added 75,000 to the revenue from reserves to cover modernization. You've deleted 120,000 for Oxcliff and you've deleted 28,000 for road co-op position.
That's correct, that's what, that's the changes that were done this morning.
Okay.
Plus the increase in income that we did on the fly tonight.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Marks.
Just had a thought, a couple of weeks ago now, we had a call, a Zoom call with several residents from the in Hurst, Turvey area, Turvey Park area about the skate park. And I just wanted some assurance that Mr. Brooks is expecting to, I think Mr. Farrell back up here, that we need to mitigate some of the issues out there and which will take some funding. I just hope that there is some consideration there in the budget.
Mr. Brooks?
Through you, Madam Chair. I believe if we go to the committed funds section of the budget, we're carrying forward $90,000 for Turvey Park.
Thank you, Deputy.
There at line 16 shows 90,000 being carried forward. That includes the new playground equipment and there's a little bit of money included in that 90,000 for the installation of some fencing.
Mr. Leach?
Madam Mayor, as well, there's some fencing that is to be installed along the ravine and that's the responsibility of the developer. So, um, but there is some fencing that will be the municipality's responsibility. So we, and maybe it's happened already, but to, you know, give notice to the developer to install that fencing, it's a bit hard to do that work in the wintertime sometimes, but along the ravine, which I understood was part of the problem that the neighbors were experiencing.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
So what I'm hearing is that we can safely assure, we're going to make a very good attempt to mitigate some of the issues out there. Cause I heard that loud and clear when we were on the call.
Would you agree to that, Mr. Brooks?
That $90,000 includes a provision for some chain link fence around the park. Or maybe the opportunity to, if at council's direction, they want to put up privacy fences or share in the cost of a privacy fence for those residents who wish it. But typically in park areas, we would install a chain link fence and that's what I've accounted for here.
Deputy Mayor Marks? Deputy Mayor Marks.
I know there was a discussion about the noise and I think the suggestion come up perhaps, trying to grow some trees there to actually help with the sound. I don't know what kind of a cost difference that would be, but I'm just bringing it up because if the situation doesn't improve out there, I imagine they'll come back to us.
The biggest problem with trees, it takes quite a few years to get them large enough to do much sound mitigation is the problem.
Unless we put some bigger ones in.
Even so, you have to, they have to become quite dense. Anything else anyone wishes to ask or? Counselor Kravitz.
I see that you adjusted the amount for Catfish Creek. What number did you use for Kettle Creek for the levy there?
You're muted. It's eighty thousand.
Okay, yeah, it's. Yeah, it's actually going to be eighty thousand four fifty nine.
Did you hear that, Ramona? He gave you the exact amount.
I did. So if I add that, our exact amount, take us back to our overall.
Four hundred and fifty nine shouldn't make any difference.
I just wasn't sure what number she used. That's fine.
That's good to check on that. We're a little more exact now.
Okay. Counselor Ferrin.
Last, just in, it's in regards to that Southdale Bridge. I still keep thinking about the painting. I know our, our, the prior engineer, Waters didn't believe in painting bridges. I'm just wondering, is there a benefit to painting the bridge or would we be just as well off to live with it? I know, I know I've talked to a few people and they say they last as long painted or unpainted. They just look a little rusty, but I was, I'm not saying cut the budget down, but I just wonder, we took that hundred thousand and put it in reserves and don't paint.
Well, go ahead, Mr. Perrin.
Staff would have a difference of opinion than Mr. Waters. Assuming that he said that it doesn't, bridges don't require painting. I believe if I recall, the conversation was that he didn't support painting the Jamestown Bridge. If I'm incorrect in that, maybe someone can correct me, but that would tend to make some sense, given the condition of that bridge and it wouldn't matter how much paint you put on it, it wouldn't extend the life of it. The Southdale Line Bridge is actually in good condition now that the, some of the members have been replaced. If you don't paint, then you will end up with corrosion on the bridge, reduce the life of that bridge substantially and you will be setting the municipality up in a position where we actually have to replace that bridge with a new bridge. So painting is just like, you know, painting your, your car. If there's exposed metal or things like that, if you don't leave it untreated or if you leave it untreated rather than that corrosion just rapidly increase and, and reduces the life of it. So staff would not support or would not recommend to council that not to paint that bridge. You should, you should paint it to try to extend the life of it as much as possible.
I would certainly agree with that. I disagreed with Mr. Waters when he, he did say that it didn't extend the life of any bridge painting it because the rust didn't hurt it and I thought, well, rust is a corrosive action that does weaken the metal structure. So I totally disagreed with him, but I didn't get anywhere. Counselor Ferrin.
I just wanted to say I bow to your expertise, Mr. Perrin.
Please don't bow, but when you, when something, when something rusts, you actually lose the physical end area of the, of the, of the structural steel member. So you're reducing the size of that, which reduces the amount of tension or compression that that member can take. So we would recommend that you coat that bridge.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
For what it's worth, I certainly agree with that. One other thing I was thinking of in previous years to try to, you know, lower that increase as much as possible. Do we have any projects that may be extended later in the year? I know some years we have taken a project and straddled it over two budget years, so we're only paying half of it. Do we have anything that may fit that? Like project would pay for half of it this, this year and then half in the next year?
That would be Mr. Perrin or Mr. Brooks probably could answer that. Mr. Perrin, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll start and Mr. Brooks can hop in. So once we have the detailed asset management plans in front of council, then, and so for the core assets set up by regulation, so that's roads, bridges, water, wastewater, as well as storm drainage. Those, sorry, those detailed asset management plans may recommend actually doing projects over two years or partially funding a project, putting the money in reserves with the intent of funding the balance of it in the upcoming reserve. The idea would be to try to mitigate those spikes in capital programs. As noted previously, we'd like to see council maybe move towards a program, a service program type budget whereby you fund an absolute program for, for example, road surfacing, like hot mixed paving and surface treatment. Same thing for sidewalk work and roads reconstruction. So we can try to mitigate those peaks and valleys in capital expenditure.
Mr. Brooks.
I could just add to that. I don't necessarily see any projects here that would work well split over two years. And I guess I would just remind council that in 2022, we have a very large capital project looking at us in the face here being the Front Street Rehabilitation, which is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of about three and a half million dollars. So this, when you're looking at the capital program for 2021, it's going to be significantly smaller in 2022 due to the Front Street Project. So there's not going to be a whole lot of room left over next year.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
Other question ahead. This year we found, due to COVID and many things, staff did not have, like we anticipated doing crosswalks, a few other things. And staff, I think I've heard their meeting or so ago that simply just didn't have the staff time for various reasons, very good reasons. Are we anticipating, no one knows what COVID will do next year, but are staff comfortable, will have the ability to get the projects finished?
Go ahead.
Through you, Madam Chair. I don't believe 2021 will be as busy of a construction year as we had in 2020. So I don't foresee any problems barring any complications with COVID that will have any issues completing the work that we have scheduled for 2021.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
So I'm almost at the point, if we, if we had a desire to lower that increase by one percent, and I understand that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
Literally going to have to take the eraser and say Rhodes, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less. And I just wonder if we did that, and I'm not suggesting we do, but if we did, how loud will staff scream? Convince me that it's not a good thing.
Mr. Brooks.
Sorry.
Through you, Madam Chair. So what I would say, I think I'll use the hot mixed paving program as an example of what Deputy, Deputy Mayor Marks is considering cutting. We had a roads needs study done in 2019 and that roads needs study calculated a road system adequacy for the municipality. And let's, I believe the number was somewhere in the neighborhood of about sixty eight or seventy. So that report recommended a funding program for our hot mixed paving of what you're seeing here in 2020, I believe the number is one point one five million. And in 2021, it's one point one seven three million. So what you're going to see if you start making cuts to the paving program is that our road, our road systematic was, is going to go down and our roads are going to get worse as time moves along. And there again, I had mentioned Front Street earlier. We may well have to cut into that hot mixed paving program in 2022 to help fund the Front Street Project. So cutting it this year, I would suggest is not a good idea as it may have to be, we may find it necessary to cut it, cut part of it next year in order to fund the, the large capital expense we'll have in 2022.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
I'm certainly a big supporter of the road needs study. I asked for a reasonable explanation. I believe I got it. So I, I'm satisfied. Certainly we don't like these things. I think that's, I think we're going to probably make the right decision for the residents. We need to communicate that to them. I appreciate this attempt to do that.
Other comments? No one else has any questions? We've got another meeting in six minutes. We need to make a decision on this, I'm assuming, tonight. Counselor Ferrin.
I know any, any increase in budgets are always undesirable, but I think this, after we've gone through it tonight, I think that the budget is reasonable and it's realistic. It's a, it's somewhat of an increase, but I think it's, it's warranted. And I, and I think that, you know, it looks as if things are going to be well managed and I'm comfortable with the budget the way it is.
My biggest concern is the people who've been affected by COVID and have lost their jobs, et cetera. And I certainly don't want to see, you know, people punished. That's, that's my biggest issue here. And I know we have received special COVID funding. Some of them have received salaries and, and such to help. But I'm sure there's still people out there struggling. But I, but what is the will of council? Is your will to adopt this as our budget? Deputy Mayor Marks.
I tend to agree with you. Like, we do not know where we'll be this time next year. Depend on people paying their taxes and depending on what COVID does and other factors. You know, if we end up getting seventy three percent of our tax revenue, we're in big trouble. Certainly, I think we have the ability during the year, if we see that trend, we'll make adjustments. But like I said, we, we went over this very thoroughly, realistically, I think accurately. And I don't see any of us offering any more suggestions. I certainly wish I had it, the ability, but I can't see it. So I have to thank staff and they've done a thorough job. Don't have to like it, but I think we have a job to, to do it. And then certainly in the new year, as the year goes, we're going to have to monitor this. And if all of a sudden our people do not pay taxes and stuff, we'll have to make adjustments, but I think it's a fair budget.
Mr. Leach.
I was going to suggest that we're less than five minutes before the next scheduled meeting, that you may want to recess this meeting and come back to it because even we have several motions to deal with and that's going to take some time. So that start at seven, if that's council's desire.
Sure. Is that acceptable with everyone? Then we come back, we'll make our final decisions following the wastewater, water rate study. Thank you. Do we need a motion to recess? Or not, Mr. Leach?
Yes, we would. Just a future motion.
I'll move it.
All right, Dennis is moving and Tom is seconding to recess and reconvene following the wastewater, water rate study meeting. The vote? Sorry. Yes.
Counselor Ferrin.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Witt?
Yes.
Counselor Will?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martin?
Yes. Thank you.